I'd like to call this meeting of the whole of order and emergency business and go to his wedding. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands foundation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. First order, Mr. President, approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say you have a recommendation in second, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Recommend approving the June 17, 2025 council meeting. Do you see everybody have a chance to agree with him? Do you have any corrections, additions, in a motion then?
I'll make the recommendation.
I'll second.
Have a recommendation in second, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Recommend approving the June 2025 planes list.
I'll make that recommendation.
Do I get any comments on any of the planes, everything? I see we have the painting who is seen extremely cheap.
That's a big price.
Good price. Appreciate that, as you have.
Air conditioning units too, I don't think, Mr. Mash.
Give recommendation to approve.
I'll make that recommendation.
I'll say you have a recommendation in second, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Recommend accepting this person's petition by National State for various funds at June 30, 2025.
I'll make the recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Recommendation in second, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Municipal liquor stores. Thank you. Pretty good, Jim.
It is, it's been very busy. And I did take your recommendation, Todd, and I have had bar backs in all the weekends, so it is.
It has been crazy, for sure.
Yep, big time. This past weekend was very busy and the sales did very well.
Can you speak to the change, so is it on?
I think so. Can you hear me? Okay, better?
So what do we got planned for the next one?
Well, this.
Yeah, this one, yeah.
Yeah. Well, we got the Little Fork Fair this weekend, so I'm not gonna do anything.
Right.
But the next weekend's our barbecue cook-off, and that'll be a big one. I think we have.
The cook-off?
Yeah. Thirteen or fourteen teams already signed up, so. And a band, and the usual. It'll be a good day. Wear your buffet pants, come on out and try some meat, it'll be good.
Great. Questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Sure.
For both the gazebo, is there any movement on that?
I don't know how to find something different. I say let's just use it for Rainier Days and get rid of it after this year, but I don't know what to do in order to get a different one.
What would we have for the gazebo?
The green one.
We're trying to talk about doing something out of the trailer so she can move it around. But I guess that's pretty big weight trailer. If you'd rather than have that, please maybe just go back to the chicken.
You can push a lot more though, having it enclosed though. You don't have to have somebody constantly running in and out of the bar to bring you more supplies. So yeah, I like the idea of getting a trailer. I just don't have the sources on where to buy one, you know?
Should we pretty much do that network that's?
It's kind of an eyesore, but it works really well.
It's in the way.
Yeah.
Maybe something smaller, but yet enclosed.
Or maybe shaped differently and that can be moved. I do like your idea, I just don't have any sources on how to find something with wheels and even like a train car or something, I don't know.
Well, there's several sources. We could get, you know, those fork extenders for bobcats. If you built a gazebo, I would think the bobcat with extended fork, you would pick things up and move them around pretty easy. And nothing else. My front end motor with extended fork can move anything. You know, if we were to construct something or have something built, you know, a lot of stuff will come with, you know, channels and so you can put forks in it to move it, so it wouldn't be a big job at all, you know, whether you have plugins or you plug power in and you just have to plug it.
So would you be willing to round that up for them? Maybe would you be willing to round this up on us once that works?
Maybe I have three areas that think so.
I was gonna say, we can put it up for sale as soon as Rainier Days is over and see how much we can get for it, and then we'll have kind of an idea of a budget for what we can afford.
Yeah, I think, you know, probably over the discussion and, you know, if you're trying to build a, you know, what size do you do the gazebo and what does it look like? Quite honestly, we're gonna have a carpenter and accountant again in the month building on the dock. He might give us a folder building one or something like that, so. You know, exactly what are we looking for? Yeah, we need a break and let's.
Ten feet wide, about twenty feet long.
That's what I'm saying.
I was gonna say, Rainier Days is only getting bigger, so if it could fit two bartenders in it, that'd be great, you know, and and, you know, move around in it.
Why don't we do this? Get a couple volunteers here to come up with something, you know, the right size and and I'll talk over you things here and then obviously we can do it so it can be wired, but just make sure we have a plug in so that we can just record into it. Come up with some ideas. Maybe we can get a price on it. You might be able to look in a, you know, look it up on the internet.
I've done a little research.
They have ideas, like, okay, and stuff like that.
Somebody's always got a portable building for sale.
Okay, so. Why don't you bring us some ideas and talk to whoever, some ideas, maybe we got something to look at, okay?
Okay.
And we will discuss it. We have to get a price on it, get a price on it, and let me say on the internet. Talk to whoever, whatever, I don't care, whoever, but give us something to look at and we can price melt and looking forward for something that makes sense, we'll do something with it.
Okay.
Anything else, Jim? In a motion to accept a recommendation?
I'll make the recommendation.
I'll second.
You got a recommendation in second, all favor.
Um.
Opposed? So carried. Nick, maybe two more.
Hi, everybody.
So what do we got for issues? Water breaks?
Oh.
Good. Moing is up the stump, everything going good?
So far, yep.
Okay.
Why is all of a sudden in front of six Rainier Beach, ones with the brains of the harvest or something plugged or is it not working right?
I don't know who put it in, but somebody put in a PVC pipe in the curb line and they ran it out by, what's that owner? Lugu? Is it Lugu?
Amanda.
Yeah, Amanda's house there. I don't know if it was somebody's kid worked down on their house, but they put a pipe in there and that thing constantly gets plugged up with dirt and grass and it doesn't, it doesn't make it to the drain. It hits that pipe and then balls up right there.
So what do we do with that?
I don't know. Plug it. Would be the best option. Then we're gonna have to probably do a little concrete work on that curb, I'm sure, to get it to flow the right way, because they notch that out there, so the curb gutter is kind of. Yeah, and it kind of dips down right there.
I've got a couple little things to do, Nick. Little, little library out here, could use some blue paint and white paint on it.
Okay.
Maybe get the girls to do that. And then also, pretty much in front of Trani's house there, there's a water belt box. The top of the box is broke off, there's no cap on it, the top is broke, the rim, you could probably take a chop saw, cut the remaining piece of the rim off, you know, the top section, and then they have inserts that'll fit right into the tube, and then you can put in the cap in there.
Okay.
So you can cut it off, flush the insert, it'll fit in there, and then it'll fit in. Right now, you could ruin entire of that that's sharp.
Okay.
It's right by Trani's house, so you'll see it's the main house. And then just get a little paint and, you know, just check all the that little mailbox, anything else might be painted, I don't know what painted management.
I think that Firehead over there, the owners, the, what were, or, or, it's needs to be named, you know, yeah, the one right on the corner.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The guy's coming up next Monday or Tuesday to start the beach dock.
To do what?
To start the beach dock.
Rainier Beach.
Next week?
I didn't know what he said, he said he'd come in.
Yeah, he, he. He came up here last Saturday and met at my house, then he come out here and looked at it, took some final measurements, and then looked at a spot where we could stack the five-by-sixes and then kind of park some stuff out of the way. We're gonna use that short little section by Diana Eaton's there, that alleyway we have. It's only gonna be, you know, fifty feet in just for the timbers and stuff to sit on, so we can get them over there without blocking off half the road down there. That was the closest spot to put them. And then he's gonna have his job trailer up in that little parking lot on top. So I'm gonna talk to Minnesota Power tomorrow. I sent a message today, I didn't get any back from them, but are we gonna have to have like a, like a temporary drop down that pole for power? Or we're gonna have to rob it from someone's house, just for like a chop saw and, you know, charging batteries up and so you don't have to have a generator humming down there all day long?
Yeah.
Just to have power from somewhere, but we'll get that figured out when the time comes.
With that said, Cheryl, have we had any, why, anything on additional funding from the thing?
They asked me, they sent me some pictures of what everything looked like before, but what I keep trying to say, we don't have any underwater pictures. So I mean, I'm sending everything I can possibly send them, and every couple months I'll.
Keep on moving.
I'll try, yeah, I'll ask again, whatever.
You know, can you maybe, in this, that's federal, is it, or is it state?
Well, you can go to the state, and the state of course has.
You know, why don't you talk to Rob? You did?
Well, I've talked to the stock market people, who are, yeah, but they, yeah.
Maybe Roger could.
But the state has, it's federal money, so the state has to talk to the feds, and then the feds have to talk to the state, and the state has to talk to you.
Well, okay. Oh, I talked to Roger just about every other thing, so let me talk. I said, Roger, follow up on this and find out who in this case is supposed to be talking to the feds. And that's about the dock. The whole thing is money from the flood relief.
Can I spend some money on gravel?
I'll talk to Roger and maybe he can do some, rattle the right cage or something. I, you know, I mean, I know you send in letters, but.
Nick, they have a question for you, Nick.
We have three alleys that are pretty dioritas in gravel, one short, one and two long ones.
Yeah, why don't you get a price on that?
Okay.
You can call everyone you want, and, and, you know, you can call Boy, you can call Jill Kennedy, whatever you want, but you can get some prices on that. You know, I don't know who else does it, but, you know, you get three, boom, that's fine, you know, operate, but I, I, you know, I'll give you a boom, just like anybody else.
Okay. We got three, three alleys. Usually when I have it done, I just have them come set their end gate and just drive.
If you eat a crush rock or that we sell, that you'll put is that crush egg, we have more that stuff in packs.
Yeah.
As you know, we've seen on that, we've done that. We're, yeah, we filled it into the top of the curb.
Right.
You couldn't, oh man, I almost had to get a jacket, but it's kids to the tiss. And I told the guys today to go and put the ballers in, you know, the inserts are there, but there's no reason, anybody seen the reason why the ballers couldn't be installed?
No.
I mean, the inserts are there, but woo, the ballers, so, you know, right away, I mean, the concrete's around them. But I'll do, I'll get that done in the morning, so then basically that's.
I know every weekend has been super busy down there.
Yeah, well, that's, something's going to be, I'll get that done right away.
Okay.
Make sure it goes first thing in the morning. Maybe we'll get them installed, personally, and then electric. Anything else, Jim?
Yeah, all the parking equipment.
What's that?
Any movement on the parking?
I haven't heard anything on when to start, Dave, because that's gonna be a full week of setting and pouring concrete and I haven't heard anything from Stevie on that. I guess his hope was, when we looked at it last time, was to get these two big squares, and if we could get one of them big squares and with the two big slides on it that come off, get that one set before, because I told him Rainier Days, and we were opting out of that week before and week after, just in case something went haywire during Rainier Days or busy time. So if we can get that big one in before, and then once that's done, we can get the rest of the stuff tied to it, it comes off of it. But that one big one, I would like to see that one get put in before then.
Another thing too, and we've talked about it multiple times, if you see the fellow across from Hamilton?
Yep.
About getting that apron cut out and a belly cutter put in there? Now, I know he's never home, but you might catch him early in the morning, he might have a day off, who knows what, but that should be addressed in weather like this, so just remove a, you would have to remove, you know, a ten-foot piece or something, put just a belly cutter in there, then he can drive through with the water, won't travel through.
Okay.
So they can touch up the neighbors.
Yeah.
Anything else, Jim?
Can I just comment on something that you mentioned, where the ballers are being installed? If, if you could just take a look at that part along where the side drops off to the bull ramp that used to be above the pavement, now it's kind of flushed, and I'm just wondering if you might do a temporary safety rail there or something, with all the kids hanging around there? I see them flopping over on the concrete, I might just want to take a look at that.
The simplest thing you could do is just get a, it's probably sixteen feet from the ballers or wherever it is. Get a couple six-by-sixes.
Yeah, maybe the same.
Yeah, they have a top and then back to where it originally was. They, you know, they had ordered the concrete to, the block had flushed, it was, they didn't get a job, you know. We wanted to, just nail some right on top and spray a couple down.
Yeah.
We need a couple big legs, crews on it.
I think we still have some big ones from the piers when we are working on the pier ladder.
I don't remember what, what, fifteen feet, twenty feet, you can, yeah, I lost it for sure. Just get a six-by-six and put on top of it.
Okay.
That'd be the easiest, and that's what it was, if they fall off, they fall off, that's what it was. You know, put the tempera rail up there.
Just on, yeah, it's on the wall, right?
It's easy fix.
Yep.
Anything else, Jim? Jen, all the trees taken care of? You got any tree issues?
Um, we just did a week's annual maintenance. We have some additional funding left over that we were able to spend and purchase some additional trees that Sholos will put in at their leisure according to the tree board's direction, and then also a specialty trailer that we can haul our water tank around with, and a chainsaw, right?
A chainsaw.
This is like a mini dump trailer, right?
Is that, is it a dump trailer?
No, it's a, it's a little aluminum.
Just to haul the stomach breakers?
For haul, to haul the big water tank on, so it can water all the trees.
Oh, great.
Yeah, it's a nice little, it's a nice little trailer. We'll, we'll use the heck out of it for that.
We just, we just, we tried to be conservative in our funds, and she told us, the lady from the states, that we have to buy a few dispenses.
Probably, can you get, listen, can you get a pump and a sprayer?
We got, we have the tank, the hose, the valves, everything we have. We don't have a pump, it's just gravity, you have to open the valve and you can water. We didn't get a pump with it, but.
You spend all the money?
Yes, every last dollar.
Oh, okay. Anything else? That's good, I think, guys. Nope, I got them.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Okay, North Coach Air and Sandation Department of Garden and Structure and Board of Directors, is there a way to come on that?
I think they've been working on that for years. They wanted an additional person from East Coach, and then onboarded, and they got whatever they wanted, it had to drive through the legislative process.
Who is on there for Rainier?
John Burden.
John is our, John is our appointed member for probably another year, I guess, and we appointed him for a couple, three years.
I think it's supposed to be your term.
Yeah, I think we're into, he might be another year for John, but, yeah, I think that's important. Okay. Okay, the National Board of Business, direct manager, approve the act of description, Rainier Park Master, many street vacation. Now, is that the one on, okay, on that, we gotta look at that, you know, a couple things that went down there after. We might have been a little hasty on that in regards to, probably didn't consider that there's power poles that are on some of that property, existing power poles, and with those, there's probably a utility easement, there's probably some agreement. You know, obviously, if you vacate the land and it comes there, can you cut the pole down, you know, things like that. We might have to look into that a little bit, so I'd like to think about that, and quite honestly, I, I think what we should do is really think of a procedure. You know, we get listed for vacations all the time, and the planning is done, the planning is done, it's done a good job for us on that end, but I think we should have a procedure that we have for vacating property, whether we're gonna sell it or just vacate it, or what the reason's for, you know what I mean, and really have a list, because I, I got thinking about this. The county was trying to vacate the 155, and I've gone through several release, you know, paid attention, several things going on, and usually the procedure is the state, you know, the county, or the public entity, whatever it may be, first makes a determination whether they can, you know, whether they can leave the property, whether they can actually do what this person, whether they, you know, give it away, retire, or whatever, and that's the first determination, and then there's a list of criteria after that, you know. And so I think we should really put that in place, because just about every year, we get some kind of one or two, you know, we have to act on it, vacation, we don't really have a procedure, and we start sending presents and stuff like that, so we probably should be looking at a real procedure that we follow that, you know, or something like that. I mean, I have no problem with some of this stuff, but again, like I said, we could run into an issue if we're giving away a power, you have a piece of property with a power pole on, and, and we could get a like a property owner or something that just decides he's in for taking that pole to sell, you know, maybe it's on his property or, or whatever, you know. So there are some considerations here, I think we should be thinking about, and, and give Cheryl time, if nothing else, write it in, how we can, you know, circumvent any issues like that. I, I don't want to pass on a problem to a native reader when we're trying to correct some of these past, past problems, so if we want to create another new one.
So do you mean like a policy, so that says something, like a vacation request, you have to go through the zoning committee in addition to the council, everything, or, because I mean, the league in Minnesota cities, they promote general ideas of why you shouldn't, should it, shouldn't, like, grant someone to request or petition. A lot of time comes down to like, it has to serve the public good, it can't, it doesn't, it's not, they add some benefits from it, but the overall criteria needs to be that the city is not gonna need it for the future, and then the public benefits as a whole.
See, Jim, that's exactly what I'm describing, that's exactly what we should have, that written down, doesn't, check mark, check mark, check mark, or it doesn't, you know, one of these, that, that's exactly what I'm talking about, we should have a little checklist when somebody comes in there, so we can say, well, you know, by doing that, it's for restrict, you know, right away for somebody else, or some, you know, it does restrict. And we should have that checklist, and we should go down that, and then existing utilities on it, or existing property on it, how do we handle that? We may not need it, but we can't be given that stuff, so that's, that's what I'm talking about. Like you say, this, this one can come up mainly to correct some generational problems that were thrown on our plate, and we're trying to correct them, but I don't want to be too with that problem on the future.
So you're saying you want the description if, to, to directly reflect those issues? I, you know, like if there are parcels that have power poles on them, then we don't include that in the vacation expression?
Yeah, something, well, again, how can we handle it so we don't pass on a problem and create a problem? I mean, we just gotta think about it a little bit, because obviously, when Dad, if he put it right way, Mr. Trump would pull it, they'd build, he didn't think it'd be a problem. Well, it ain't a problem until we got a seventy-five-foot street, you know, and then it becomes a problem, you know, so that, that's all I'm trying to avoid, trying to accommodate issues here, but at the same time, I don't want to pass any on, so let's just think about that a little bit. Nothing's gonna happen, those streets could be built there, nothing's gonna change here for a few days here anyway, sorry.
So we're willing to motion to tag this?
I, I think so, I think, yeah, I think this over a little bit, and, yeah, another thing was for discussion on that too. I think that's part of the conversation, and it was brought up by Mary, and, you know, there may be some additional parking needed down there for that park, and I think once the railroad goes through with that depot system, they'll be retaining all there, the park will be defined, it'll have some real nice, you know, we might do a, you know, you know, we're gonna look at fixing that, oh, oh yeah, Nick came here, Nick, did we ever look at digging out that corner? Or we're gonna look at fixing up that inside corner, so there may be some work there too, so all that stuff ties together. I don't see, I was having a rush on anything here, so. Get a recommendation table. I'll recommend the table.
I'll second.
I got a recommendation, set, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. Okay, recommend approving the act of description, Americas Suburb Company, East Site, Division One, is that the four, four part? See, now there are little power poles, they're coming up, and there is access, we looked at that pretty close. Maybe I have a little more discussion, maybe certainly isn't as complicated as this one could be, so I don't have an issue with that at all. Hey, Doc, you guys, so.
We just need a recommendation? I'll make that recommendation.
I'll second. You have a recommendation in second, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Rainier update, Berta.
The Rainier Days Committee has been meeting since May, right, Jen? And we are, like I reported last month, we are doing a raffle, so we're just updating on the raffle, it's going really well. If anybody's interested in selling, just reach out and we can get you a book of tickets. And the other thing we would like to start, the committee asked me to come here to ask the mayor and the mayor pro tem. We are going to purchase a banner, and, correct me if I'm wrong, it's gonna say, "Welcome to Rainier Days." What else is it gonna say, Jen, do you remember?
The date.
And thank you to our sponsors.
Yes.
And we want that to be the beginning of the parade. When you go to most parades, you know, somebody's carrying a banner, so we would like to ask you to, if you would be willing to do that at the head of the parade this year, and more than likely future years.
How can you do that? Yeah, in, um.
August ninth?
August eighth?
August ninth.
August fourth, day's the great day?
The ninth, the ninth.
Ninth.
At one o'clock.
I don't see any problem with doing it, I'll double check my calendar, but I certainly plan to be here, you know, double check in case I.
And somebody else will step in if one of them can't make it.
I don't think I have any, so I'll be glad to do that.
Perfect. Anything else, right? Does anything else, right?
I don't think so. Oh, I think you can do that, sorry, about the parade.
Oh, Todd, yes, um, would you like to line up the parade again like you used two years ago?
Yeah.
Okay, the person that's been doing it would like to step down, and you did a great job when you were there, so if you could do that, and then, because you'll be right there.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you, Cheryl, I know I was forgetting something, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We do have a pancake parade.
Yep, Pancake birthday, seven thirty, yep.
Okay.
I've got one, babe.
Sure.
Uh, is there an update at all on, I know the steering committee had met with the pier, is there any updates on that or not?
I do have some information on that, um, I mean, a week and a half ago, I noticed there was about twenty yellow vests down there at the bridge, and so I put mine on and walked down there and become number twenty-one, and, uh, they are looking at letting a contract for the pier, or for the bridge, excuse me, and that led me to another subject, but anyway, there was three contractors there, and of course, I introduced myself and told them that we have a eighty pier, or eighty piling, they were very interested in doing that work, and, uh, so it just showed to all three, yeah, this is what we do, so that type of design that they were looking at was real favorable to them, they really, were really interested, they, they called several times on that already, when it was going to be left and stuff like that, we did talk to, um, Tommy, myself, and Tim Matthews, who, uh, he was just an engineer, and we did talk to, um, Jeremy, uh, Walbridge, he, he was very much in favor of drawing the plans and specifications according to that new drawing, and letting out the bids, um, and I said, I did want a price, they asked for a price, and what that was going to cost us, for him to facilitate the bid letting and the specifications and that, he has not gotten back to me, so I will make that thing called a model, but the wheels are turning, and there are a lot of people that are interested, of course, this type of construction is what a lot of them do, so obviously, with the guy that designed this, or did the original proposal, that would be four bidders right there, which obviously, if you got four bidders, you would have some competition, so it, it, it is looking, everything's looking more favorable, and so I'll try to get some dates and everything for you, and let you know, let you know about next council meeting, uh, dates and prices or whatever from Jeremy, or whatever we can, okay, any information I can on that. And then, when I was doing that, too, um, I received a letter from the U.S. Coast Guard, so I'm jumping to another subject now, but it's on the Rainier Lift Bridge, the Coast Guard, and there's a comment sheet, there was about, oh yeah, you can probably all see it. I can't believe all the people were on the evening list, there was, what, three pages of, of people that were writing, I was, what's the message, I can't see all these people, but what it is, the people that had, had, had comments to the pier, or to the construction of the bridge, and why or why not, there are all these items, and I think we should, as a, um, as a council, we should put a comment in on this, Tom Doherty has, uh, used ANI for information about, you know, the flood, about the number of piers, all that information is readily available, and he somehow tapped into it and got all this information, and he, he said he'd be glad to, Cheryl, you know, offering a, if we offer comments that we'd like to see, uh, you know, that, you know, whatever, uh, are concerned about the restriction, mainly the restriction of the water, the height of the bridge, they did describe the height of the bridge relatively to what eleven feet of, uh, clearance, but from when?
You know, from high water, from, oh, yeah.
From the top, yeah, yeah. So, we, we do, you know, I think it's important that we do make a comment on that, that Rainier shows some concern, what, what are they, is he?
My concern is me, my concern is me, like, after it's done.
Again, that, that's fine, uh, so Cheryl, if you don't mind, I'd like to see if you contact Tommy, he'd be glad to, he can show you what we have, I did, uh, Greenland Properties Owners Association had reviewed the comments that Tommy had submitted for various people on this, using ANI, and they said there was just, you know, it, uh, it's, it's like the piers that are in there, how much they restricted, sixteen thousand cubic feet of water per second in, in terms of that flood, so, it, there's a lot of relative, you know, a lot of things that are relative to this, and all that information's available, well, obviously, Coast Guard, ANR, you know.
I have a question that goes in line with that, so these waters are supposed to be navigable, and so with the comments that go in, I'm assuming someone has commented how, if you wanted to sail along the pole down there, they, they are not accepted to making it navigable, they won't lift the bridge for people the way they're supposed to.
Funny you mention that, that was one of his comments, he said, I listed twenty-three things on the river, and that needed boat traffic to visit, you know, whether it was the National Park headquarters, and restricted through the sailboats, can get through there, uh.
Or even bigger, or.
All, all these things, so, uh, it, it's, the thing is, you know, if, if we have comments, and they, they, maybe they'll have a hearing or something that we can actually go to, and list some of the things, and, I mean, there's probably a hundred things there that could be listed on the comments, and I don't want the, maybe Cheryl can get a list of, of what some of the other people said, and I, I do think Rainier should be speaking up on this, because if we sit there and say nothing, they can say, well, you had your chance, you didn't comment, so.
What's the date line for the?
You know, they always use that phrase, but, you know, every day, you send, an attorney sends a letter out, they always say, this, this, and this, but not limited, you know, you know, not limited, there's other things that we haven't thought about, you know, so in our comment, I think at the end, we can say, these are some of the issues, but not limited only to these, you know, and leaves the door open, or if you're going to have another. Okay, so if you'll do that, then Cheryl, um, I don't think we need a recommendation on that, but let's, let's keep that under the thing, and, um, I'll try to bring you back to some information about the, the pier as quickly as we can, and Nick here, go to take care of that, maybe a couple timbers on top of that.
Yep.
Thanks for telling us all of that, last thing I do, this'll be a trip, we break the legal into that place, so, um, anything else, it's open to the public, anybody got any other comments?
Well.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sure, absolutely.
Oh, okay, sounds good, do you hear me okay? Hear me okay? A little closer? Okay, fine, sounds good. My name is Francis Inerson, I'm the oldest of the sons of Francis Joyce Inerson, and we've had property on Birch Point here since the late fifties. Anyway, um, just a little my background, my family's been in the flying business for years, I was fifteen years with the family business, and I was thirty-five years with the airline, then I just completed five years with the Federal Aviation as an inspector, so after fifty-five years, it's time to do something different, so I officially retired now, so I was thinking we'd have a little more time to do other things, but my wife and I are adjusting after all these years together, and it's, the reason our marriage was successful, of course, is we're apart half the time, so we're, we're figuring all this stuff out, uh, on a personal level, uh, what's happening with our life right now, we're happy to be here full-time, we're living full-time at, at Birch Point. The reason I'm here today is, I'm just representing the residents of the Birch Point itself, uh, regarding, we would like to request, and however we start that process with you folks, to have water service, uh, city water service to the residents on Birch Point, some, have it extended there, I'm representing the Langels, the Caseras, the Hermans, Jellies, Has bargains, Harchees, and the Inerson family.
Everybody on the point wants city water?
Yes.
What do you have now?
Uh, we have, uh, either, there's wells, some people have wells, some are sucking from the lake, and then some of us have water deliver service, water service from.
No, I thought you were going without city water.
No, that's fine, yes, when the, uh, when the sewer system came in, of course, some years, well, you know, there was, uh, discussion, but at that time, and there was a different group of people and different interest at that time, but we'd really like to work with you folks and see how we can make that happen, we under, my limited knowledge on how this works, just, I'm assuming that the water, obviously, and hydrants and all the things go like, uh, would be obviously substantial cost, and as the landowners, they're willing to share that cost, or have it assessed to us, or whatever, uh, however it works, we don't have, we're just getting information, though.
I think that's what we did, the petition from, I don't know, the last one, it's like Glad Kachinsky, a few years back.
Okay.
Where they, they, they could pay the cost of the installation of the water main, and then obviously, there's just a monthly assessment, uh, to, um.
But they're not within the city limits, so.
Pardon me?
They're not within the city limits, so it makes it a little bit more complicated.
Birch Point is not in the city limits of Rainier?
No.
And I, should I just, my, where does it stop, where, where's the line?
City beach.
City beach, okay, the High Falls City Beach, is, that's the, okay.
But we do, we do have water mains that we own beyond that.
Yeah, we're beyond.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think the main goes as far as Molly Herman's place.
Our sunset coal, so.
Yeah.
Looking onto that line, but again, there's easements, because they're not in city property, so there's some easements that have to be, uh, county road or wherever, that would have to be, uh, secured, and that's maybe one thing, uh, probably one of the first things, if the county, you could maybe, could just go see the county board, and our representative is Destry Hill, or, yeah, Destry Hill.
Yeah, I don't have to talk.
He, he's our, our, Destry Hill, and whether he's, and he's very long in the water, is shorter, by the way, so that would.
Yes.
Whether the easement, you know, on the county roadway.
Sure, sure.
Obviously, if all those people want, easements would have to be, have to be easement from each one of those, because.
Sure.
In the future, if they need to repair, make sure we have an easement, that they don't own the line.
Oh, yes.
Get the rent to repair it, and whoever can pass the services on.
Excellent.
So, so those are one of the first few things.
Okay.
Um, if you have a bottom map, um, for, um, I don't think it would be, I'm not speaking out of turn there, but I think I could probably, I'd turn that over to one of my investigators, and they can give you a, a relatively rough cost, or what something like that would cost.
Sure, sure.
And so, you know, you don't have to take the shock, or whatever.
No, no, I understand.
You don't want it, and then all of a sudden.
Do we city steward?
Yes, we do, everybody on the point, we're fortunate, we have.
Everybody has steward.
Yeah, which is wonderful, I'm impressed with that, we have good services.
In the county, yeah.
Sure.
I mean, from, to International Falls.
I, I, the reason I ask is because this is sort of jingling something in the back of your brain, so the, the new water watershed plan that the committee that I was on, they can request funding, I don't know if it's every two years, or every year, but it, their priorities are like lake frontage, water quality, um, water quality projects, and I, that comes with culverts, and a, and a host of other things, I would see if Matt Quinn, or somebody on the county, would be, even Destry, because Destry is also on that, um, watershed board, where they're talking about projects, looking for projects to put money for, we basically collaboratively, um, instead of just having the watershed in a county line, we collaborated so that the watershed, we work with other watersheds in other counties, and we're a complete watershed.
That's great.
Yes, and it was a way to get money for projects that had to do with like natural resources and water conduits, so I would, I would see if Destry or, um, if.
Two in the right direction. Right, one thing, like, fire protection, even though we have rule of water, rule of protection.
Yeah.
Fire is always better, so.
Oh, sure, 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 sure.
To go, maybe, you know, reduces the insurance costs, I don't know what it exactly does, but like Jen pointed out, there, there's multiple ways, and there may be some, you know, again, if you're just willing to pay the bill yourself, might be the easiest, rather than trying to get some funding.
Sure.
But it might not be that complicated either, certainly, there's, there's more work worth looking at, and I.
Very good, thank you, no.
And, and that could be directly drilled up there, because I do know you have a water, when I say water, wrong water, you should, you know, you, you, you're a little, you know, water, right, in the water.
Oh, yes, sure, understood.
Directly drilled, so there's ways of doing that, that will minimize some of the.
Very good, sure, okay, so then, thank you for the information, thank you, I appreciate that very much, so anyway, the, when you say the, the, the city property ends at the city beach, you're talking about the International Falls City Beach, were you talking about the, that's the east end of that, okay, it's not the, it's not the Rainier.
Yeah, right there. But yeah, right, if you look there and just visualize right down that road.
Yeah.
That's where the wave of property line is.
Right there.
Because skirts may go on the.
Okay, and the far east.
Once you pass Nancy's house, you're all.
You're done, that's all county, okay, so obviously, that I have to, I've got some things down there that you suggested, I thank you very much, well, very good, thank you, thank you for listening to me.
One, one other thing, I don't want to complicate this issue to come out, for water, is there, is there any thought of annexation or anything, and you kind of brought that up, when you mentioned where the property lines are, is there any thought of annexation at Birch Point to, to the city of Rainier?
It has not been discussed, to be honest with you, I did not realize that, I didn't realize, I assumed we were in Rainier, but.
Well, I don't want to complicate the issue or anything, but, uh, you know, one thing I think you will find, there has to be, what do you call it, a sponsor.
It has to be petitioned for by residents.
By the residents.
Oh, yes, it's gotta be, it's not, sure, oh, yeah.
Usually it has to.
It isn't just, it isn't just hearsay, it's real, you know, it's be sure, I can understand.
But, but what Cheryl said, too, is if, if you look into the annexation and are interested, Cheryl said it has to be.
Conticker. Here's the procedure on that, too, so.
Sure, sure.
County will look at that, and the city looks at that, scooping the school district, isn't it?
I suppose, could have changed the.
But anyway, it's not a.
Okay, I understand.
But I think it's, it's something, if that's what you're looking at, too, like, like I said.
Yeah, very good.
It's more complicated, and it might be that, um, something to consider, so, okay.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Council, I appreciate it very much, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Nothing else, then?
Motion for your.
A second.
Motion is second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.